Sir, please, is there anything I can do, sir? Please. Don't do this to my wife, man. You don't know what you're doing to my family, man. Please, I'm begging you. I literally need that... Where am I gonna put my feet? Sir, I'm begging you, please, please. Please.
That is not a crime, and you're telling me to get out of my vehicle. Do you know where Lieutenant Mingus is right now? So, he's not in the building?
I don't know. I'm not...
What do you know? I'm not telling you nothing else until I find out who's driving that vehicle. You're not a supervisor, bro. I need somebody higher than you right now.
Uh, if you didn't know, I went to the police academy and they kicked me out.
That's my purse! I don't know you!
Spit me on my face, right now! Spit in my face!
Today's video takes us to the Chicago Public Schools. One of their many locations scattered about the city if we find a fraudator. Who wants to do a FOIA request? Why these fraudators can't do a FOIA request online puzzles me. But then again, I guess they wouldn't have any content for their uploads, would they? So I'll sit back, watch, have a good laugh, and most of all... Enjoy!
How you doing?
Good, how are you? Uh, right now, I'm just gathering content, and I'll let you know when I need help.
No, sir, you cannot do that. So turn that off. Because you haven't had clearance.
To come in here and record?
Yes, sir. And we don't have that information. Turn that off, please.
Clearance from who?
CPS. What are you recording? Turn that off, sir.
Is this a public building?
All security to the front desk. All security to the front desk.
Oh, wow.
Turn it off, sir.
Now, I didn't show this part of the video because the yahoo is playing some kind of music, and I didn't know if it was his personal music. It might be copyright. But on this door that he went through, what does it say? "Security notice. You must display your ID at all times." So this tells me that you have to sign into the building, and then you get a tag to wear around your neck, most likely, or pin it to your shirt. No doubt about it. Of course, we all know fraudators don't show ID because it's a violation of the Fourth Amendment.
Hey, hello.
Hello, how are you? May I have your name?
My name is Officer Williams. I need you to step out if you can. Give us one second, please.
Step out where?
Yeah, we have an emergency. I need you to step out, sir.
What emergency?
Sir, I need you to step out. Sir, I'm asking you to step out. Please, step out.
Step out.
Step out, sir, for one second, please.
Hold on, hold on.
Sir, I need you to step out.
Hold on.
Sir, I need you to step out.
Ma'am, ma'am?
Sir, I need you to step out. We have an emergency. Sir, I mean, everybody to step out.
Sir!
Yes.
Sir, could you leave?
Can I leave?
Yes, could you step out?
Why?
Sir, could you step out, please?
Why are you asking me to step out?
I asked... They're asking you why? Sir, could you step out?
You haven't even asked me why I'm here.
They're asking you to step out, sir.
Yeah, I think you got...
Why are you filming, sir?
I'm here to gather content for a story.
Okay, can you, can you step out, sir?
This is a public space.
Sir, no, can you step out, sir?
This is a public space.
Can you step out?
Okay, I would advise you to call the police.
Yeah, we are. Until the police come, can you step out, sir?
You're about to violate my rights.
No, I'm not, sir. Can you please step out, sir?
Common misconception among fraudators is they don't have to leave unless they're committing a crime. They don't understand that they can be asked to leave at any time. No doubt about it. It may be a public space. It may be open to the public, but they can always ask you to leave. And how many times has this yahoo been asked to leave? He's not gonna leave because that's his building. He paid for it, no doubt.
I have a right to be there.
No, not in the, not right now, sir.
It's a public building.
No, sir, can you step out, please? Please, can you step out to the police?
May I have your name?
My name is Jose Williams.
I appreciate it.
Okay, because now can you step out till, until the police come, can you step out, sir?
You're telling me to leave a building while I'm...
No, no, you can step right outside until the police come.
Outside?
Right outside, sir. Until the police come. I got it, I got it, I got it.
You're too close to me, sir.
No, 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 I'm right here, sir. I'm not telling... No.
You're invading my space.
Go right outside until the police come, sir. Please, can you...
Can I, can I, can I speak?
Okay, speak.
Can I speak? You don't have the authority to tell me to leave a public space where I have the right to be.
Okay.
When the police comes, then they...
No, 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 no. I'm gonna ask you this now.
You're security, right?
Yes, and I'm asking you to... My job is to ask you to step out until the police come.
Your job is to call the police and let them handle it.
And then, no, I'm handling it until the police come. When you go outside until the police come, and then when the police say you can come in, then you can come in.
I have the right to leave.
But right now, I need... No, sir, you do not. I'm asking you, can you step now?
Can you step back?
No, can you step out? Can you step out, sir?
Step out, please.
You guys are invading my space.
No, I'm not, sir, no, I'm not.
You invaded my space.
No, I got this.
Remember, good people, this is all under the guise of government transparency and accountability. I don't know what the hell he thinks is going on in this lobby, but he wants to figure it out. And he's not gonna leave anytime soon. This video was nearly one hour long. Why? Well, for clicks and views, of course, on YouTube.
No, he...
You should not be doing that as well.
Yes. Can you step out, sir?
Can you call the police?
I did.
Okay, we'll wait for the police.
No, okay.
We'll wait. Sir, you're too close to me.
I know, I'm gonna be right here.
Can you back up?
I'm standing right here, sir.
You don't intimidate me.
Yeah, you don't intimidate me, sir.
I'm not here to intimidate you.
Okay, yes, you are.
You're here to, to, to... Force me to leave a place that I have the right to leave.
I'm asking you to leave.
And I'm telling you that I'm not going to leave.
Okay, well, you're gonna, please.
It's a public space.
No, you cannot, you can't record. No, you cannot record in here, sir.
Where's the law?
You cannot record in here, sir.
Show me the law.
Yeah, you've been doing this for the longest, sir.
Show me the law.
You've been doing this so long, sir.
Show me the law.
How many times have you done this, sir?
That's, that's not why I'm here to...
Yes, you've been doing this, and you've been put out so many times, sir. All the buildings that you've been into, sir. Have a nice one, sir, please. Have a nice day, sir.
I have questions.
You gotta go, sir.
I have questions for the CPS, alright?
No, okay, well, you're in the wrong place to have questions.
That's not true.
Go downtown, sir.
This is a public space.
I tell you what, frauder, the park's a public place, too. Why don't you go there and record and see what happens? Probably some angry mothers and fathers are gonna kick your ass for recording their kids. Then you'll be branded as a pedo. I have to speed this up, good people, because this insanity continues like this for about another 10 minutes. And then we go into a whole different thing. Let's go ahead and skip ahead a little bit.
15 minutes later.
Members of the public need to have access to their government at all times. You cannot restrict that right for us to know what the government is doing. That's what matters. That's what's important. And you guys need to understand that. Did it tell you what's going on?
They told me that if there's a guy videotaping...
In public. In public. That's, that's all I'm doing.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all I'm doing. But for, for some reason, they think that I don't have the right to be in a public space.
I...
While I'm, while I'm recording.
You have the right to be in a school.
It's not a school. It's an office. There's no school here.
It's not a school?
No, that's, that's the thing.
We're a CPS central office.
Office. It's an office.
And we, you gotta have a reason to be here. We asked him, what was his reason? And he wanna say that whatever reason he has...
Right, he's there for clicks and views, sir, because he can't find a regular job. He's unemployable. Why? I don't know. But I strongly suspect he has some kind of background he wants to keep secret. That's why he never identifies himself. You know how frauders roll.
But he won't show us his ID. He don't have, who he wanna see. And the reason he wanna, what, what he wanna talk about, is no one here for him to talk to.
I'm also here to file a FOIA request.
And it's not, this is not the building, this is not possible.
Alright, but sir, the law says you can file your public request in any public building.
Not this one.
They have to take it and forward it to whoever they need to forward it to. Any public building.
Do you know where to get it? I can tell you where to get it.
I know that I can be, I, I can be because it's, it's the closest place to me at the moment.
Is there, is there, you guys have a supervisor here? That can explain to me?
They, they...
We told him that this is not the place. He's, he's been at other sites. He's been at schools. And he's been banned for all of them.
That's not true. You said that, that's not true.
We got IEP kids in here right now that we didn't close down the whole building.
I do apologize, sir, but the lad doesn't care if you shut down the whole building. He's a narcissistic sociopath. And his work is much more important than some children learning about something because he's gonna prove a point. He has a right to be there.
Because of him. And we didn't shut down the whole building. Because of him. I just asked.
Yeah, yeah, sure, sure.
And we didn't ask him to leave. What is, what is the purpose?
So now, it's...
Other than, other than it could be a public person to be in any public building?
Right.
What is the purpose?
Well, first, I want to file a FOIA request. And they're denying me that. And they won't even call a supervisor for me to speak with. They won't call anyone to speak with me. Right? So...
What's the FOIA request regarding?
Well, if, if they give me the paperwork, then I can file my FOIA request, and then they'll figure out what my questions are.
You talk about rat vegetation and all of this. We don't have, we don't have... What is the, what is the business of this building?
We all know what the FOIA request is about. He wants names, titles, salary, date of hire, all this other bullshit he can get online. Yeah, he just wants to stand there and make a spectacle of himself so he can upload it to YouTube. And I must say, he's doing a fine job so far, isn't he?
Here's the website. This is all done online. So you can go to CPS AD website?
Uh, yeah, I'm aware of that. I can also do it in person. I can also do it in person.
It's all, it's all online.
Because as far as I'm concerned, you guys are trying to deny me access to this space, to this building that I have the right to be in, as far as I'm concerned.
We're not denying you. You need to have an appointment and then follow our visitor management policy. If you wanna do all of that, we can do that.
Right, if you, you need an appointment, if you need a specific, if you're here for a specific business with the staff or with the management. But if you're simply coming in here to fill out a FOIA request, ask questions, you do not need an appointment to be in a public building.
The FOIA requests are all online. Like, if you have an appointment here?
Yeah.
Right? We can check you in through the visitor management process. We're having to do that.
Okay. And then, and then what's, what's with the policy that I have to show my ID to be in a public building? It's not a law, it's a policy, right? So they, they, they were demanding that I give them my ID to be in this, in the, in a public building.
Do you have anything with your information on it?
I do, but I'm not willing to give that up.
Frauders never wanna show ID because they're all criminals. And they don't want people running their name and finding out what kind of crimes they've committed in the past. Why else would they refuse to show identification? There's no other reason. You just don't want people to know you're a criminal.
So we don't know who you are? We don't know what business you have here, like? So...
Well, that's the thing.
So if you, if you wanna do a FOIA request and say it on the site, if you want to, if you have an appointment here and you wanna check into visitor management process, we're having to do that.
Right, but the, the, the point I'm, I'm trying to make here today is that I do not need to give you my ID to be in a public space building.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not gonna argue with you.
I'm not trying to argue with you, but I'm trying to tell you that that policy...
I, I hear you. I hear you, so... You got the FOIA information request?
Do I have it?
You hit how to file for a FOIA?
Yeah, I, I do know how to, I do. I do.
Okay.
Right, but you guys need to understand that members of the public have the right to be in here without, without, without giving up their ID.
You still, you still have that appointment to be in this, in this building.
Not, not to come in here and file a FOIA request?
Yes, yes.
No. And if that was the case, there will be a sign here that says that. There's no sign here that says you have to have an appointment to come in here.
Okay.
It's open to the public.
Thank you. I'll take note of that, okay?
It would make absolutely no difference if there were a sign up because frauders claim that's a policy, not a law. Just like when it says, "No recording." Oh, that's a policy, that's not a law. So if you put a sign there that says, "By appointment only," they'll say, "Is that a law? Is that like a law? Is that like a law?"
It's open to the public. You guys need to do better.
Okay, I hear you.
You guys need to do better.
I got your feedback, thank you.
That's why, that's why we do what we do, to educate public employees that members of the public have a right to be in their building.
You need to have an appointment to be in this building.
That's your opinion. I disagree with that.
If that's your opinion, then I disagree with your opinion. So, thank you, sir. If you got, you got what you need, correct?
Well, I need to file my FOIA request and give it to you. That's what I need to do.
I need to, hold on here. Let me see if there's even an option because I don't think we do FOIA requests here in this building.
Well, the law, the law... Can I explain something to you?
Sure.
The law says I can do it at any public agency with any public employee. Hand it to you, and then you forward it to your post-stating of records. That's all you need to do. You don't have, you don't have to give...
It's all, it's all online. And you can, why, why can't you submit it online?
Because I, I prefer to do it in person. That's why. What, what if I don't have a computer? What if I don't have access to the internet?
Do you have the other, you have forms?
That, that's why that law is in place because some people do not have access to the internet.
I wonder if this lad's been watching Goat Boy's videos because that's what Goat Boy always says. "I'm currently not online." Yeah, you're currently a jack wagon, too. I love that mask. That mask sure does cover up that ugly face good, doesn't it? Yeah, but we know what you look like now. And we know you're a criminal. He just wasn't a criminal from Florida. He was a criminal from Illinois, no doubt.
Some people do not, can, can't afford computers, right? That's why, and, and that's part of why I want to do it in person so that you guys can understand that people can also do it in person, not, not just online.
Can you hold tight over here, please? Please, I'm asking you. Thank you. And let me...
Right, I mean, I, I see children going in there, so...
Because they have an appointment.
I, I don't have to, I don't wanna record kids and, and all that stuff.
Right.
But, but I want you to understand that I have the right to be in here. I want you to, I want you to understand that.
I appreciate what you're saying. I appreciate you not wanting to report kids.
Yeah.
Let me try to get you the information that you're asking. Let me ask, okay?
I'll be here.
Is that fair?
I'll be here. And, and I have siblings in Europe, in Australia, but I chose to come here because of the ideals that America represents. Because of the freedoms, because of the beauty in this country, right? But then when, when you, when I get here and then I see that those ideals that I was looking up to are being trampled upon and slowly being eroded, right? It, it, it drives me crazy.
So wait a minute, frauder. Are you an American? You, are you born here in America? Were you born here? Oh, don't tell me this yahoo's from another country just coming here to make some quick cash. Oh, man, does this guy have a green card? Are you here on a visa? What's your deal, frauder?
That's why I chose to do what I'm doing, to, to do my little piece to keep that freedom in place. You know, and, and that freedom starts by holding government officials accountable. It's that simple. Can I have your name once again?
Ronan.
Ronan. And then who are you here?
I'm with safety and security.
Okay. Um, so, this is what I need.
Good.
Um, the date that CPS... What, what date was CPS's contract with, I'm sorry, terminated with Sodexo and Aramak? Uh, and then name of the person that's directly responsible for overseeing maintenance and cleaning of CPS schools.
Okay.
Um, his salary.
Okay.
The date of his hire. And this is my email where they can send that information to.
Okay.
Now, I didn't think that anybody could write worse than Goat Boy, but I think we found somebody who can. What? Alright, so he goes to know what date CPS Sodexo contract was terminated. Sodexo supplies food for the schools. And he wants the name and salary of the person responsible and yada. I knew that he would want the names and the salaries and the date of hire because that's what frauders do. That's all they do. They're nosy. They wanna know how much other people make because they're not making that much, I can tell you that.
Alright, do we get everything accomplished?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, good.
Good to meet you, Torres.
Nice to meet you. I'm sure we'll...
Nice to meet you, Salas. Alright, yeah.
Who, who are you?
You really wanna target me today, right?
I'm just curious.
Yeah. I mean, I can, I've, I've told you who I am without giving you my name. And you know the reason why? It's not because I have anything to hide, right? It's, it's, that's part of my Fourth Amendment, right?
I would, I would prefer to, to refer to you by your name
Right.
than anything else.
Okay. Yeah, right.
Just refer to you as, you could've told me who, uh...
Right, well, right, right now, just call me good citizen.
There we go.
Just call me good citizen. Because you know what? I, I know you guys know who I am. And, and...
No, I don't.
You don't personally. You don't personally. But CPD...
Today, I will.
Yeah, CPD knows my name. Skokie, Skokie Police, they know who I am.
Okay.
Right, and I know you all communicate, right? You're all commu... I'm sure, if you, if you guys wanted to find out who I am today, you will.
I know I will.
Yeah, you can.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, you can. Right. So, so, why, why I'm not giving my name is not because I have anything to hide. It's just that I, I, I like to exercise every single right that I have under the Constitution, right? And one of those rights is not to tell you who I am. That's my Fourth Amendment right.
Now, we're gonna have to assume that nasty word, of course. We're gonna have to assume that this yahoo is an American citizen or a naturalized citizen or something. Because he's talking about his rights. Yeah, if you're just here visiting on a visa, you don't have any rights. I tell you what you do have. You have the right to go home and shut your bloody mouth. Yeah, I tell you one thing, good people. He stands there and talks with that officer for another 12 minutes. It's unbelievable that that officer really thinks he's doing a good thing. Yeah, some of these officers need to be fired. They have no clue. But I tell you another thing. He didn't go back into that school building. No, he didn't go back in there. Well, let's go ahead and watch a Dr. Dave double play. Let's watch another time when this yahoo is kicked out of somewhere. Road X clip. Today's video takes us to the great state of Illinois where we find a fraudator at the DMV. Only problem is, they don't want him there. They kick him out and have him trespassed. Lovely. Let's all sit back, watch, have a good laugh, and most of all... Enjoy!
So can I, can I speak with your supervisor?
Yeah, sir, give me one second. Yeah, it's a 10-second. Have you step outside for just two seconds? Yeah.
Closest?
Yeah.
So what is the closest one? Which way?
Uh, Chicago North. It would be on the middle one. Yeah. It is appointment only for everything. You just go to this phone number, the website, the same morning, and they help you out, okay? Thank you, sir. I apologize, but there's no recording in the building. It's illegal to record in a state building.
Sounds fairly simple to me. There's no video recording in the building. But this is a fraudator, and fraudator's brains are very tiny, so he doesn't comprehend that. Because for the next 45 minutes, he's gonna argue that point, even with the police. Well, let's cut this video up, because we're not gonna watch 45 minutes of nonsense, are we? No way.
Sir?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you're gonna step outside, the supervisor...
No, I, I think it's legal to record in here.
No, it's not, sir. He has it even on the door.
I'll, I'll wait for your supervisor. It's, it's, it has, it has to be backed by a law. You just can, you just can put up a sign that says, "I can't record."
Okay.
Alright. Sure. It has to be a state statute, you know?
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. That phone needs to go off. No recording in the building. Off and out. Tim? Tim, Juan, JoJo?
Can I, can I get your name?
Outside the building.
Can I get your name?
Give me one second.
Are you the supervisor? Do I want to go to jail?
Yeah.
For recording in a public building?
I'm calling the police. He won't stop recording.
When do you think that all this nonsense will stop? Yeah, especially when you tell these yahoos that they're loitering, they say, "Oh, no, I'm not loitering. I have a purpose. I have official business." And then they go on to say that recording is official business. What a bunch of malarkey nonsense!
Maybe the police can explain it.
Okay.
Right.
Are you together or no?
No, no.
Can you, can you explain to me why that is?
Hi. It's 1470 Lee Street. I am calling from the... I have a gentleman who won't stop recording me, and I'm...
Wow. You know what I'm saying, sir? When you put up a sign, it has to be backed, it has to be backed by law. It has, it has to be backed by law. I'll, I'll wait, I'll wait for the, I'll wait here.
No, outside the facility.
I'll wait here. What, what's the law behind that? What's the law? What's the law? The Secretary of State doesn't make laws.
It's really unbelievable that grown people will go out there and argue about a sign to record. What the hell is so important about recording at the Department of Motor Vehicles anyway? Why don't you put that effort into finding a real job, and then you won't have to do this bloody nonsense?
He doesn't, he doesn't make laws, no.
You wanna go outside or not?
He doesn't make laws.
You wanna go outside?
I'm, I'm, I'm here in the lobby, at a public place.
You gotta go outside, sir.
This sign? This sign has to be backed by a law. You just can put up a sign. Okay, what is, there's, there's no statute behind it. There's no statutes here, alright?
With the police.
Right. What is your name?
Go outside.
JoJo?
Just go outside, boss.
What's your name? Reese?
Yeah.
Thank you. I understand you're just doing your job. I understand that.
Right.
But I'm, what I, what I'm here, what I'm here to show is that the public has, members of the public have the right to record in public. And if... Yeah, but, but this, this is... Yeah, but this...
Just imagine if every sign had to be backed by a law. Hmm. Now, I wonder if a fraudator turned down a road that said Dead End. And that's not backed by a law, so would he try to drive past the dead end? I don't know. Yeah, I'm just asking. I gotta know these things.
It's just the Secretary of State saying we can't record. He doesn't have that, that, that authority. Okay, there has to be a law. There has to be a statute behind the sign. He just, yeah, yeah. He just, he just can put up a, a sign that says you can't record. This is a public place. Yeah. That's why we do this, to change, to change these kinds of arbitrary...
What does that mean? Is it worth going to jail for?
No, I'm gonna speak with the police. You know, it's, if you don't commit a crime, you know, you have nothing to worry about, right? It's not a crime to be in here and record. So, sir, did you say it was illegal to record in here?
Go outside, sir.
Did you say it was illegal to record in here?
Yes, sir.
Why is that? Can you explain that? No, I just needed to explain why it's illegal to record in public.
This is a governmental building.
Okay, yes, I do understand, which makes it public, right? That makes it a public building.
Notice how the fraudator crypt his way into the office from the lobby? That's what frauders do, but he won't be there for much longer. Road X clip.
And members of the public, especially if you're trying to gather, gather content for a story or you're documenting matters of public interest, you should be able to be in here and, 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 and do what you need to do. Good afternoon.
Hey, how we doing?
Good. What's your name and your badge number?
Officer Conway, 3491.
Nice to meet you. And are you the only one here?
I am.
Okay. So I'm not sure why they called you.
Okay. All the signs says, uh, no photo, photography, or any tattoos on the wall.
Yes, I, I do understand that, but this is just a sign. So this sign has to be backed by a statute. It has to be backed, backed by law. Because members of the public have the right to be in public buildings and record. It's been established in, in, in court.
You're talking about your First Amendment, right?
Yes, exactly. It's my First Amendment to do what I'm doing. So, but whatever reason, you think because, because, because the Secretary of State put up a sign here, that bars the members of the public from recording, but he doesn't have that authority to do that. Yeah. So if you can explain to them that I have the right to be in here and record, I mean, I'm not...
Do you want him, um, trespassed from the building? Do you want him trespassed from the building?
Oh, dearie me, that officer just solicited a trespass. That's right, solicitate. It's a new word in the frauding community. Honest it is.
They're allowed to trespass in a public building.
From a public building?
Yes.
Okay, do you understand that they can't do that unless I commit a crime? You can't, you can't trespass members of the public from a public space unless they've, unless they've broken the law. I'm not trying to teach you anything.
They're saying that you're causing a disturbance.
What, what disturbance am I causing? Just, just simply being in here recording is not causing a disturbance.
Yes, it is. It's taking universal information out of people.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll show you something really quickly. That, that might help you. This is, this is why we do what we do, to change things like this, alright?
You're interrupting the flow of the...
I, I wasn't. I, I've not interrupted anything, alright? I'm not, I'm not in anybody's way. I'm not, I'm not preventing anybody from carrying out their business here today.
Now, the fraudator's trying to get out a crumpled piece of paper, because although he said he doesn't want to educate the officer, deep down, he really does, because when he was growing up, he wanted to become an educator. But then he started going afoul of the law, and here he is today, a fraudator.
You need to take me out of that film. Can you hear me?
Sir, him, him reacting to me, it's not me creating a disturbance. That's him creating a disturbance. Him reacting to me, I never engaged him. So he reacted to me. That doesn't...
Okay, just now.
Okay, I'm not in the way.
Okay, can you take him outside, please?
Okay, he, he'll, he'll be violating my rights, and, and, and that'll be, that'll be a lawsuit.
Guys, let's do a, do me a favor. Everybody that's not here, go in that door.
Okay.
You can do whatever you want.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I'll, I'll come talk to you. This gentleman wants an audience. We don't want to provide that for him, so please go into that door while my partner comes out.
Okay. Do you want me to read this to you? It, it doesn't matter?
You too, sir.
Well, I, 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 I would hope you would hold my right here today to do what I'm doing.
Am I not doing that, that all right?
I, I appreciate that. I appreciate it. But I, but I want them to know that I'm able to do it. If you can explain to them that I'm able to be here and record.
At this point, the officer's gonna call his supervisor, because he doesn't want to go back and forth with this yahoo. And I don't want to go back and forth with him either, so let's speed the thing up.
They have those signs, and they do, the Secretary of State's been around.
Yeah.
Let me talk first, before you re-up your state, okay? They're in route, and they said that they do have a statute, that that falls under, and if you're not gonna...
Okay, okay. No, I need to see it. Remember what I said when I first walked in here? Show me the statute. If there's a statute behind it, I don't break the law. If that's a law, I will leave. I don't break the law.
Right now, the law they're suggesting you broke is disorderly conduct. I advised you when I first came here
Okay.
that you were disrupting the orderly business of this establishment.
Everything is recorded, that's fine. This is a, this, this is a... This is a, a, a US appeals court ruling, Simons versus United States, 390 US, 377, 1968. Wait. The claim, "An exercise of a constitutional right cannot be converted into a crime." A denial of them would be a denial of due process law.
Now, who would have ever thought that this guy was a YouTube law expert? Well, they all are, aren't they? All fraudators are YouTube law experts. Because if you watch Chilly the Castro long enough, you'll end up just like him, in jail.
Right? Okay. Right, but...
You're, you're being investigated for disorderly conduct.
Okay, so I... Okay.
What you're claiming is constitutional with the video camera, okay, so be it.
Right.
We'll let Secretary of State handle that part.
Okay.
While we're telling you, we're here for the criminal part, which is the disorderly conduct.
Okay.
The gentleman out here has said multiple times, he's came up here and told you to stop recording him.
Okay.
Alright, and every time he's swinging the camera, he's feeling that he's violated.
So you, you understand?
I mean, I know it's funny for you.
No, 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 the reason it's funny is he has no expectation of privacy in public. He's in public. If I was at his house or his property, it's different. He's in public. No one has expectation of privacy in public, though.
He's here where he's presenting sensitive documents that he doesn't want on camera. And which is why the Secretary of State has the sign saying, "Please no recording."
Okay, and do you also know that just capturing sensitive information on camera is not a crime? What is a crime is what you do with that information.
I don't know about you good folks, but I certainly don't want my personal information captured by this yahoo or anybody else. Now, he's been asked to leave the building, and he's still in the building. How much longer will it take to get him out of the building? Well, he'll leave when he's good and ready, which is just about now.
So different, you know? It's the only thing that restricts my right to do what I'm doing is time, place, and manner. Those are the only three things that restrict my right to record anywhere in the public. If there was a sign that says this is restricted, do not enter, and if I do that, then that's a crime. But just being in the place that I'm allowed to be in and recording cannot be construed as into a crime.
Just so you know, I have to tell you from Sergeant Flores, Secretary of State Police, badge number 0995.
Okay.
You've been formally trespassed with...
Formally? Okay.
Sergeant Flores, Secretary of State Police, badge number 0995.
I, I'm not gonna stay here if you tell me I'm trespassed, but I need, I need the formal trespass, and I'm gonna leave.
And that comes in its own form of a citation.
In the form of a citation? No. The way the trespass law works is you have to tell someone to leave.
Okay, I just, well, Sergeant Flores just told me.
Okay, then I'll leave. I'll leave. Alright, then you can deal with my lawyer later. Alright, thanks. Alright, you too.
Imagine that, good people. Another fraudator with an attorney on retainer. These guys must have stacks of cash. That's all I can say. Yeah, well, it took, uh, five police 40 minutes to get this guy out of the building. Of course, they were being nice to him. I would have kicked him right on out. Yeah, well, I tell you what, if you, uh, enjoy watching stupid people do stupid things on my channel, this is the place for you. Please subscribe. As always, thanks so much for stopping by, dim-witted fraudator. Why can't you get a job, boy? Cheers to that.
Guy just assaulted me. Guys, this guy just smashed my camera on the back of my, my other finger.
My purpose is to try to, my purpose is to try to ruin people's lives.
But I just got arrested.
See this car right here? I can film, I can film his license plate, I can film his car.
None of your business. You guys are rude.
It's my business, because I'm on your camera.
No, it's not. Walk away.
No, you need to walk away.
Walk away. I don't need to leave. This man is, uh, he, this is a personal vendetta. So anybody who was affected by this, this, this dude right here, this dude right here, anybody affected by this, this excuse for, for elderly man.
And it was harder than I thought.
Terry equals immediate detainment unless you're a constitutional law scholar.
So we got a supervisor for...
They have no expectation of privacy in a public place.
Been following me for four, four times. You're taking four circles around me. I think you need to shut up, sir. You're a bootlicker. That's what they call a bootlicker.
I'm broadcasting this message to my thousands of followers on YouTube. I'm a constitutional law scholar.
And no one knows the law. Nobody.
Sir, I want to, I want to file charges on this man. They may receive a piece of paper in the mail that they're going to read. That's all I'm saying about that.
So what are we here for, buddy?
I have official business. FOIA, could you back up, please? You're in my personal space.
Now, do you see why I tell people I'm a constitutional law scholar?
I went into court today, and the Constitution held no weight.
Now, I'm gonna ask you a question. Do you think, do you, do you seriously believe the words that are coming out of your mouth right now?
What's the ticket say? Does it say my name? Don't touch me. Don't touch me. You touch me with the paper. Don't touch me.
So basically, you know, um, it's just for like, you know, if I identify anybody, it's no threat or anything.
Sorry, this man right here just assaulted me. He did the exact same thing. He smashed my finger on the back of my, on the back of my apparatus. When he smashed, he pushed back on it.
I'm, I'm here to do business peacefully.
Okay, well, I understand that.
So you're gonna need...
That's why we're trying to talk to you.
You're gonna need to use force, because I'm not violating...
I run this conversation, not you.
Let go of the camera. I'm under arrest.
Then, then, then hook me up. I asked you to stand away.
Don't put your hands on me, lady. Don't do that. Terrible decision.
These people were very rude to me, Jason. I just want to make a note of that.
So you wasted my whole time when I could have did an OPR request. I am gonna make an IA complaint tomorrow about this whole interaction.
I told you over and over, I am not gonna do that. The sign is on the wall. You're not gonna comply. I asked you that. You're not allowed to record in here.
Says is you're illiterate and you don't get it.
I'm illiterate, yeah.
You're illiterate.
Says the only people not able to follow the Constitution and the oath that they were...
You repeat the same mistakes you make every day.
And interfering is a physical act. I'm not in between nobody. Let's go. This way. Don't touch me, man.
This way.
I did, what? Is that, is that like a law? Please, don't touch me.
Let's go.
Don't touch me. You guys are...
I'm video, come on, touch me. Touch me.
Get out of my car. Get out of my car. It's on video. It's on video. You put your hand in my car.
I blocked your attack, number one.
I don't care. Stop it.
I tell you what, driver's license, I'm gonna break the window.
You're gonna break my window right now.
Yes. Get away from me. Yo, you just touched me in my face.
I'm sorry?
You just touched my face. You just, you just touched my face.
Can you identify that your policy?